All right. Let's call this meeting to order. This meeting, all the meetings of this council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin statutes. So the citizenry may be aware of the time placed in agenda of the meeting. Rule call.
Appleby?
Here.
Brunner?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Gunderson?
Here.
Rasmussen?
Here.
Jim Zandro is absent. And Mayor Kempf is absent.
Well, I'd like to invite everybody to join us and pledge allegiance. Let's let Joanna.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can motion approve the agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion?
You want to, I don't know that Jared Wilson is on the agenda, but maybe make a motion to amend the agenda to add him as the first citizen appearance.
To the citizen appearances.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's have it. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the regular common council meeting of August eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, and the special council session of September seventeenth, two thousand fourteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular common council and the special common council on the eighteenth and seventeenth.
I'll second that.
We have motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, citizens appearances. Mr. Wilson.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, appreciate you putting me first on the agenda. I am donating some stuff to the, uh, Ms. Tomaszewski's thing for the Dig Pink, and I wanted to make it over to that game, so I appreciate it. Joanna called me today and told me to maybe just give a little briefing on how horse and buggy days went for the people maybe that weren't there. I think first of all, I mean, I have to thank you guys for meeting in special session. Really making it behind the scenes happen with the permits, with the workers, the city workers helped out immensely. And Patrick was working hand in hand with, throughout this whole event. So, I mean, I really, it couldn't have been done with the backing of all of you and Patrick. I mean, thank, I really do thank him a lot. Secondly, you know, besides you guys helping out, really it was, you know, for one person to take credit for it, it's crazy. I mean, you, for those of you who were there, you saw all the people and all the business owners that came to that. And yes, did I initially talk to them and say, come on, let's go, we can do something for this community, you know, get your business out, it's free advertising, spend a couple hours of your time in downtown Wayuga. You know, those people made that happen. You know, that's, I didn't make them come down, they came on their own accord, they came to support Wayuga, and I really think that, you know, the, the three goals of the Horse and Buggy Days for, for me, initially getting part of this, to be part of this, was to, number one, have a kids and family oriented event for, for families that partake in Wayuga. Number two was for business owners to hopefully get more of an uptick in action, you know, and see people downtown, downtown had people, you know, walking around, checking things out. Every business owner I talked to was very happy. So they had flow in and out and, you know, just people walking around. Money was spent, so. And then the third thing, you know, was to keep obviously a longstanding tradition of Horse and Buggy Days, you know, going. And I think it was a real danger of not happening this year, and so we're moving on to year fifty-two next year, hopefully. You know, and I, I think it's positive for Wayuga, you know, maybe we don't want to do, some people said maybe we don't want to do Horse and Buggy Days. You know, I don't necessarily think that, a lot of people commented that it was great to have horse and buggies in there, but it's, you know, it's more than the horse and buggies. Some, some communities have an identity with certain events. I think fifty-two years of it, I think it can still happen. Now, what kind of identity we go forward besides having a few horse and buggies in the parade, I think that's up to the business owners and the business leaders in this community and us all moving forward with that. So, overall, I think it was a success. I am going to have a expense report in the next few days, once everything comes out in the wash, with the vendors, the beer vendors that are, I have to order through them for my business. They're going to give me all those things, I'm gonna, you know, they charge me for some stuff that I didn't, wasn't supposed to get charged for, so all this stuff needs to come through the wash. The last year we had it, I had the expense report from Dan Connect, it lost nineteen hundred and seventy some dollars or whatever it was, it was over, it was almost two thousand dollar loss. This year, it should be less than five hundred dollar loss, right? And if the tent company that we had lined up wouldn't have pulled out on us on Monday and we had to scramble to reserve a different tent, we would have broke even or made money. All right, so, and I will have a breakdown of all of that, I'll give Patrick a copy of that, I mean, you can probably maybe bring it to the next meeting or whatever, but if, if everything would have went as planned, and here there are always some hiccups, this would have made the chamber money, and I think all the businesses were happy. And I think I saw a lot of kids smiling and running around and having a good time. And, I mean, the, the main goal, if, you know, this event continues next year, is to do better. So, I guess that's, that's what we're going to try and do moving forward.
Well, thank you, Jared.
Yeah, thank you. As a business owner, I can tell you, it was very nice downtown.
Good.
I can, if you don't mind me jumping into, and the city didn't, we didn't really go above anything else we would normally do for anything else, but I can tell you, and it's probably not appropriate for me to say it here in this section, but I was here last year, and last year was my first experience, Horse and Buggy Days experience, and I can tell you that about twenty minutes after the parade was done, myself and my two-year-old walked down the middle of the street and there was, we were the only ones on the whole road downtown, I mean, there wasn't anyone close. And that probably would have been the same case this year, and, and he can say, a lot of people helped him out and, and, you know, he, he maybe would deflect a lot of the credit, but I can tell you, watching for the last eight months, he's been talking about it, he's the guy that said, no, we're not, it's not going to happen anymore like that, and it's, everything that happened this weekend is because he wanted it to happen, and I bet you every week, every other week, there was another roadblock or, or something that came up, and, and I think you and I talked probably every week and said, well, you're not going to believe this, or you're not going to believe that, and, and it's, it's a testament, whatever happened Saturday, the poop tournament started at ten in the morning?
Eleven.
Eleven, and you had people downtown till at least ten, eleven o'clock at night, I mean, that's twelve hours of something where last year there was really nothing down in that area, so that's really, thank you. I mean, it's, it's a big deal, and I say that, it's a bigger deal than I can even explain it, it's, thank you.
Well, I, I really think that this, you know, I really think that I saw families having a good time, and, you know, kids doing contests and just, you know, it was good to see, and, you know, families were having, having a ball, I think, and businesses made money, and I had three more people come and say, you know, I want to donate a hundred dollars to that, and next year I want to be part of that. Other people that's, hey, I want to be part of this next year. So, I mean, it, it, it can be a positive energy towards it, and other people are going to step forward. You know, and they're, they're going to offer their ideas. If we all come together as business leaders, and, and whoever wants to have an idea, you know, Richard Miller, he's an old, he's an old carpenter that lives in Wapakonawee, but he, I saw him, and he said, man, he's like, I used to come to Horse and Buggy Days all the time, I just love that parade, and that's another thing, the parade got so many comments about, there was, people loved it, you know, and to think that, that parade might not happen, I, it would be disappointing. I mean, Jeff does a very good job coordinating that parade, and it, it was, it was a great parade, but this older carpenter said to me, he said, man, it would just really be sad if Horse and Buggy Days wouldn't happen, he said, would you mind, he's like, I've got a whole bunch of crock pots that I've been collecting, you think you would have a spot for me open if I brought my trailer full of crock pots? I said, you know what, I think you can swing on in, you know, maybe, maybe this isn't going to happen as it gets bigger, but I thought, you know what, swing on in here, we'll give you a parking stall, see how many, he said, Jared, I sold four crock pots and people have been looking for one of those for a long time, you know, it's nothing, it's nothing big, it's not like a monumental thing or anything, but, you know what, somebody found a crock pot, somebody got rid of a crock pot, you know, I mean, it was, stuff like that is sometimes all, it's a boat. So. And the Red Wings, you can't find them anymore, eh? Who knows who has them? So, but, um, other than that, I thought, you know, it, it, the event went pretty well. I mean, we can, I want to get it to be a well-oiled machine and got a lot of ideas for next year, and we'll start a lot earlier and hopefully not run into some of the bumps we ran into. So.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thanks for being here.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jared.
Thanks, Jared.
Frank?
Thank you. First of all, congratulations to either Patrick, the city council, whoever with the flowers there in the center of downtown, looks fantastic, a lot of good comments about it on this weekend, and those are the things that I think a lot of people see, we don't always catch on to them real quick, and my congratulations to whoever was the sounding board on that. Okay, you see a lot of books here, uh, thanks for putting up with the mess here over the last month trying to get this set up. This room was full, one table after the other, as you can see filed up. We didn't make as much money as we'd hoped, we probably took in over three hundred dollars, but, you know, with what you see left here, but right now, we have somebody coming in tomorrow to look at, they may buy X amount, and then after that, we contact a person from the point area that, uh, some of it gets distributed in this country, some of it gets shipped overseas, he'll pick up as much as he can and will, and we'll get this room back in order again. The elevator shaft, uh, all of you have probably been sitting here saying, haha, we haven't had a problem, we still don't, I had the guy here last week that is the maintenance person, he looked at it, he said, a little moisture problem, but nothing to be concerned about, it's not water standing there and pooling. I've had some real soul searching on that, and I'm beginning to think that it was our gutters that were overflowing in the back, were stuffed solid, and the water was overflowing, and somehow between the elevator shaft and the building, there had to have been some kind of a seepage crack of something that was filling it up, because since we, we did that, thanks to Cedar Corp, and, uh, we've cleaned the gutters out, right now, we've been fairly dry, so. And you may have noticed we're minus one tree out in front, we had that cut last week, uh, the storm, not the storm, the winter, the drought and everything else did their job on it, it just kept getting there and there and there, and it wasn't dropping the leaves for the fall. The only other thing that I have to report, I'm calling by City Glass, and I'm going to have them come, they need to look at all of our windows upstairs, all of the seals on the windows are pretty well shot, and it's called wind seepage coming right in, because we can't seal them, and before winter comes, I'd like to see about getting that. Also, we have two where the, uh, mechanism that opens and closes is popped out, I've popped them back in, in some cases, the rivets have just let go, and it's, they're hitting their end of the life cycle, so I want them to look at it, and also, if you are familiar with the library, the door that comes off the young people's area up here, it's a fire exit, but we can see daylight out, where we shouldn't be seeing daylight out, so that and the glass, hopefully we can get them to take care of. That's basically my report, unless you have some questions for me?
Do you put like some kind of a gutter helmet or cap on the gutters at this point? They're planning to possibly?
Yes and no. We're going to try the heat cable this year because of that ice dam that we still have building up back here, and I want to see what that does in terms of that, but we have talked about something over the top, so hopefully keep it out. The problem is it's not leaves that's jamming out, it was a lot of our tiles, the sand or whatever that's called that's on there, just coming loose and filling it up, almost a solid mess, and I wasn't aware of it, so I didn't keep on top of it, but hopefully now we, between the city and us, we're, because Patrick and I have talked about that, so we'll keep it clean so that we can hopefully avoid any future problems. And I still do have one problem, and if anybody, especially this gentleman here, out in front where we have that light, that thing that I call the sinkhole out there, in the past, we filled it up twice now, and I looked at it today again, and it's starting to get low again, so there's still something that's settling there, I don't have the answer to that, and if anybody ever walks out that door and has an answer or a thought, please talk to me about it, because I sure would like to put a stop to that. We solved the elevator problem, however, that one is.
It's in the grass area or what?
Uh, no, it's right off the sidewalk, right there. And at first I thought that maybe something was working under the sidewalk, but there's been no other moisture problem, nothing else that I can find, so I'm not sure what, what it is, it just, it's not a sinkhole per se, it just keeps going lower and lower, and we straightened out the light poles now, I think, three or four times since it started going down, but, you know, we're down probably two and a half, maybe three inches, again, so, okay.
Getting back to your roof, if you've lost that much granules from the shingles, you should have somebody inspect it because.
That was, a lot of that was from the old roof before we moved to new roof on, and that was right after that ice damage and everything, and since then, I think, yes, I agree with you, if I had that much in there, I would be real concerned, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
And I guess we'll be waiting for Mr. Thiel to come around.
He, yeah, he's going to be, I believe he's coming from Manawa.
Right.
He thought somewhere around seven, seven thirty he could get here, but he's going to call me with an update or text me with an update, so.
Okay.
Always going there.
I guess then we'll move on to committee reports. Finance?
All right, on behalf of the finance committee, I recommend approval of a letter of authorization to participate in the value purchasing cooperative.
I'll second that.
I need a motion.
Oh.
Please.
Sorry. I make a motion to recommend approval of letter of authorization to participate in value purchasing cooperative.
Now, hold it a second.
You have a motion and a second? You have a second?
Just a motion.
Just a motion.
I thought you said you seconded.
I screwed up, I made a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments on it, Patrick?
Yeah, real quick, this, the value in local government is basically a purchasing cooperative, like it says, um, it's thirty-five dollars to get in per year, and what you're doing is, for your thirty-five dollars, you get on the list, the city of Wayuga, so if we have for office supplies or anything that we buy, vehicles or anything, we've got a ten thousand dollar office supply budget, I mean, it's kind of a big deal to us that we buy a lot of supplies, but in the big picture of local governments in Wisconsin, we're not really that big. The value group, when you join the group, you get added in with roughly eighty cities, towns and villages, there's about twenty counties, sixty-four school districts, and then there's ten other housing authorities, transit systems, so it's over a hundred agencies that you're technically jumping in on the pool with them, so if they go to shop out for a new police car, or gas, or cell phones, or anything you can buy, you can jump on and you can get bulk pricing, or bulk pricing based on, instead of us buying one car, we may jump on a list with fifty squad cars that are getting purchased, so the reason it's before you, for thirty-five dollars, it's a no-brainer, and we would be in it, uh, but you do need to pass the letter of authorization to get in it, and then basically what happens is, if we ever have an, a purchase that comes up that there hasn't been a bid created for, we have the ability that I could or staff could start up a, an RFP process and post it to this group and say, okay, this is what we're looking for, there would be a window of time where people would tell us, oh yeah, I'd like five or six of those, you know, whatever it is, and then you can, that's how you sort of get the bulk pricing. The other way that that works is, we have a hundred agencies that, one of them is going to be buying almost everything that we already buy now, so we could just jump on there, and with only the cost of thirty-five dollars to get in, we can enjoy the benefits there, and, and in the office supplies, almost within the first couple of months, you would make your thirty-five dollars back right away, so, um, it's, it's, it's going to work, for sure, so, it's a very good investment, I think, for thirty-five bucks.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
On behalf of the finance committee, I recommend approval of checks three zero eight two two through three zero eight nine eight totaling two hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and four dollars and fourteen cents in the monthly financial statements.
I'll make a motion to approve the checks number three zero eight two two through number three zero eight nine eight totaling two hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and four dollars and fourteen cents in the monthly financial statements.
I will second that.
Any comments? Questions? Concerns? Nothing?
No, nothing.
Holy moly, well then we better get a rule call right away.
Yeah.
Appleby?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Edwards?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Carried with five eyes.
All right. Anything else for council?
Nope, that'll be it, thank you.
No, thank you. Public Works? You want to do Bruce or should I?
You go ahead, you're the man.
All right. All right, I'd like to recommend approval of a letter of authorization for the TIF District Six Creation Services with Cedar Corp.
I'll make a motion to recommend the approval of a letter of authorization for TIF, District Six Creation with Cedar Corp.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second? Any comments?
Yeah, quick comment, uh, this is, right now we've got TIF for TID three, four and five that are active, this would be for a new one to be established, basically for January first of two thousand and fifteen, as part of the process to create the, the TIF or the TID tax increment district, you do have to identify projects that you would include with the TIF, so roads, sewer, water, wastewater treatment plant, the water, those types of things, uh, you do have to identify eligible projects at the very beginning before you create the district, and then set, uh, not the likelihood that you would do them, you're assuming that if you have the money generated, you could do it, but you do have to get an estimate on what the cost would be, so as part of that, this is a, a job that's not covered under the general agreement that we have with Cedar Corp, so it would be a special project, and they do have an estimated cost in there for the work, and it is charged to the TIF district itself, so if there is new development, that's where the cost would be posted to, so it technically pays for itself as long as you have sufficient development, so that's, the, the letter of authorization is to have our current city engineer, um, add this to their plate of projects.
Any other questions? Comments? So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public Works has nothing else. Please fire ambulance committee.
Uh, no action for council.
Public Health and Relief Committee?
Little, um, meeting, I recommend, recommend adopting the ordinance twenty fourteen dash one, an ordinance to abolish the police commission of the city of Wayuga and thereby repeat section one nineteen dash seven.
I will make a motion to recommend adopting ordinance twenty fourteen dash one, which is an ordinance to abolish the police commission of the city of Wayuga and thereby repeal section one nineteen dash seven.
I'll second that.
Any comments?
I can, real quick, this, this is what we talked about, we had attorney Cal and we had the council meeting last month, you made the recommendation to abolish the police commission, and then you also referred this matter back to him to do the ordinance work, basically to, to modify the ordinances to account for that, that's what he's done here, and by abolishing the police commission, as you'll remember, state law gives you the option to have a police commission, because you're under four thousand in population, you did take the action to recommend abolishing it, this would be the official action, and on top of that, then this reassigns all of the duties of a police commission to the police committee of the city council, and really, that's sort of the way that you've operated in the past, so it's not really a change, except it's, you're following state law and matching up your ordinances to your current practice and what's allowable by law, so that's, it's an ordinance change then to affirm that decision from last month. I need, you need a rule call.
Rule call, yeah.
Brunner?
Aye.
Edwards?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Carried with five eyes.
Anything else?
Nope, that'll be it for us, thank you.
Recreation Committee?
No action for council.
Okay. Public Property and Purchasing Committee has no action for council. Planning Commission, I'd like to recommend approval of sign permit for Stephanie Wilson at Wilson's Brick House.
I will make a motion to approve of sign permit for Stephanie Wilson, Wilson's Brick House.
I'll second. Go ahead, you're on it, go ahead.
I'll fight over this. I second it.
Motion and a second. Any comments?
Uh, basically, it's, it's, if you know where the Wilson's Brick House is, right now, they would, there is no identifying markings or signage on the outside of their building, except it says Fair Store from a while back, what they want to do is put.
Forty years ago.
Yeah, they want to put, and I believe it's cast iron letters that say Brick House, that would be flush with the top of the building or the, the face of the building towards the top, and then they're going to replace the glass block where it says Fair Store and put in Wilson's, and so that's what they're looking to do.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I'd like to recommend approval of sign permit for Jonathan Messiah?
Millsna.
Millsna.
Okay, whatever it is. Star Communications?
I'll make a motion to approve of sign permit for Jonathan, Jonathan Millsna, Star Communications.
I will second that.
Patrick?
They are looking at adding signage on the building that is, like Star Dairy's building, uh, it would front on Wisconsin Street though, and when you look at their building from the parking lot across the street, there's a door and then there's windows for the Star Dairy, um, to the upper right of the door, the entrance door right there, there's a big white wall, that's where they would look at putting a twelve by eight sign for Star Wireless or Star Communications.
So that's, that's all okay with the ordinance and with the number of signs you already have in the building?
Yes, yeah, because this, technically, there, there are no other signs for this business for Star Communications, because it's a separate business than the Dairy itself.
But we have stopped Hutchinson Insurance from putting a sign on the bank's sign, saying that they were out of compliance.
Right, but they're saying, when Hutchison's wanted to put a sign on the bank, they were putting it on a building, I believe at the time was determined to not be their building, and the justification for this sign is that Star Wireless or Star Communications operates out of that building, and so it's not an off-premise sign, because it's on the building they do business from, it gets a little bit, um, I don't want to say questionable, little, there's a question to be raised about it, because Star Communications isn't like Hutchinson Insurance, where he has a place of business that you come into and do business, or at Star Dairy, you walk into the Dairy and you do business there, Star Communications, what they're saying is that they do business out of that location, but it's within, there's not really storefront, I guess, for them, except they're saying that it, it's out of the Star Dairy building. Does that make sense?
Like they're a remote business operating.
Slightly.
I don't know about rem, what they're saying is they operate out of that building and under the premise that they. I don't know about rem- what they're saying is they operate out of that building and under the premise that they, that is their premises that they do business from. Their sign technically is on the building that they're saying they do business out of.
Then what about the Star Communication sign that's on PC market?
That is a separate issue that he's been sent a letter for, that it's-
Okay. Because you can't have it out of both, so.
Right, and, and as, as far as I know, the sign that's downtown is not an official sign that's put up by Star Communications. Does that make sense? The yellow sign by Main Street PC, Main Street PC is trying to put up as a service that they offer.
But-
But we've told them that it's, it's a, he's gotten a letter and a notice saying that he's out of compliance, so.
We'll revisit this.
Well, we, we will because he's, he's coming with a signed permit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so we have a motion in second. Any other discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? And recommend approval of the sign for Bobby Connors at BMO Harris Bank.
I'll make a motion for recommendation of approval of sign permit for Bobby Connor, BMO Harris Bank.
I'll second that.
Motion in second. Patrick?
BMO Harris is looking to install an outdoor ATM through the, in one of their drive-through stalls. The signage that they're applying for is when they put in the ATM, they're putting in some type of a structure to shield the ATM. And they're putting the label BMO Harris on the front of it. So, that's what they're applying for, is to be able to have that label. It doesn't face the street. The piece that faces the street just says ATM, so it's a generic ATM. But that's, that's what they're asking for, is the, the ability to put BMO Harris on that, that structure. And there was a question at the Plan Commission because as part of that project, they're looking at extending their curbing. And that's something that would be handled through a separate permit. But this is just for the signage alone on this. Okay?
Any other questions? We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. New business. Trick or treat hours for October. Traditionally, it's always been the Sunday before from three to five.
What day is it this week? What day of the week?
Falls on a Friday.
Falls on a Friday. I do know that there'll be, hopefully, there'll be, uh, along with Boo Fest, on Main Street, there'll be a haunted house. So.
Has it typically, historically been a two, like a two-hour event?
Yep.
Trick or treating?
Yep.
And it's on a Friday?
No, it's on-
Sunday before.
Sunday, Sunday before is traditionally when we have it.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-sixth?
Was it three hours last year? Do you have the record of that?
Not with me, no.
I believe it was three to five.
Yeah. I will make a motion. We can move on this.
Sure.
I will make a motion to set trick or treat hours for October four from three to five.
On?
Oh, sorry, on, um, calendar.
Sunday before?
Sun- yeah.
Twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth, thank you.
I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion in second for Sunday. October twenty-sixth from three to five P.M. Any thoughts, Patrick?
No, I'm just looking back at last year's minutes. And we said it for October twenty-seventh, but in the motion, where you approved the street use permit, we didn't lay out what the time was on that at all. But-
Well, the street use permit would come-
But the street, well, alright, but it would probably refer to trick or treat hours, so I would think, right? Or was it from the month prior? I've got, I can pull it up right here, so in October-
Look up the minutes.
I got her. It's just loading up. We, we've got time to kill anyway before-
We've got time to kill.
-the deal comes, so it's very strategic. Uh, Sunday, October twenty-seventh, last year, from three to five. That's what we said. And that's what you're recommending?
Yep, yes.
There you go.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion in the C-Hall, project financing options.
You have a memo from Cedar Corp, which is what we had asked for in your packet, and Thad is here to review memo on grants, financing, and all the different options that are available for the project.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, City Council. Um, we did go through quite a few programs. I outlined them all in the memo. I can go through briefly, uh, each one. On the community development block grant, the, the old CDVG, uh, program. These are federal funds. There are restrictions and compliance requirements with it. They are, cannot be used for facilities for general conduct of local government. So, uh, in, in, in essence, what we're saying there is if you bring in a special interest group, maybe I'll pay for a portion, square footage of it. That's why, one of the reasons we're looking at the community center, uh, to, uh, work with the residents as well as the seniors. Without that inclusion, we do not feel that the, uh, block grant program will, will be a viable funding source for the city, uh, uh, as a large funding source for that project. Uh, the Community Development Investment Grant is, uh, assists communities with downtown development. It, they have a match that you have to come up with. A substantial private investment in activity must have a significant impact on the local tax base. Again, local tax basis is gonna be City Hall. There is no tax base to it. Include job creation and, and, uh, has the potential to act as a catalyst, which it does. But it does not favor public buildings. Again, another one of those programs, uh, is not likely to provide, uh, significant funding for that project. Uh, rural development, they have, uh, funds, but they, their funds will not pay for the brick and mortar, if you, if you so call it. Uh, they'll pay for equipment. I've talked with the rural development staff. They've got a, their maximum grant is fifty thousand dollars. There's a match with it, but, uh, and, and it'll fund things that we looked at for the, uh, police department. Video and audio equipment within the interior, or in the interview room. Uh, police gun safe, potentially, if there's a safe, uh, in the evidence storage area. Uh, security system for the police area, and potentially, we could work with them on a security system for the entire building. Uh, that's something we gotta take a look at. So, there are items that are not brick and mortar, that, that are fundable through the RD. And, um, there, they also have, um, an interest rate loan. It's about, right now, it's about four and a quarter. I had four percent, about four and a quarter over twenty years. Um, your geo-bonding, I think, is gonna be a little less than that, so. But they do have that program available for the community. They also have a, a program called Get to Know Your Farmer and Know Your Food. And what this, uh, program really targets is to help improve and expand domestic farmers' markets, roadside stands, community sponsor agricultural programs. Where that came from is I was talking, uh, talking about the back parking lot of City Hall. We're gonna have to do something there after we get done with the construction because it's gonna get beat up with all the traffic and equipment trailers are in there. So, we're gonna have to redo some of it. What I was looking at, just out of the box thinking, is, uh, can we put an island or two in there? Can we do something architectural, landscape architectural, why is it, that would provide some incentive to have something in the back parking lot while we're getting it, you know, try to get it funded through the, through the RD, uh, program here. Uh, and talking with the RD representative, there's a real strong push to fund these type of programs, uh, for Get to Know Your Farmer. One thing that, that, uh, she had mentioned to me was a potential open-air shelter, somewhere you can hold farmers' markets on the weekends. Uh, potentially, if there's any decorative lighting out there, that you have electrical outlets to, uh, provide people sources to plug in and, and sell their produce. So, that, that's a viable option. Again, the, the limit on that's fifty thousand dollars. The rural development would have to look at these. It, we would probably submit them as two different applications. So, instead of one with a cap of fifty thousand, that would, where we try to maximize the money on that. But again, rural development, when you start to work with them, you get the information to them and they'll come sit down with you and go through exactly what you're looking to do and, and, and walk you through the program process. Uh, it's a real good funding agency, but they do have a, a potential for us to help us out. Wisconsin Focus on Energy, um, these are programs to help, uh, offset the cost of, uh, high efficiency, and renewable energy projects. What we're looking at there is, is as we're going through the project, looking at some different type of lighting, some different type of, uh, heating, ventilating type systems. Sometimes those, those do cost a little bit more upfront, but then there's energy savings throughout the, the life of the project. Uh, we use Focus on Energy, put the VFD in, in law number four. Uh, we got a, it almost like forty percent grant to pay for the VFD on, on the pumps. So, they are interested. Uh, we do work through them, uh, to get some kick, uh, not kickbacks, but some re- rebates on the products. Uh, one thing that, you know, it's just, we have to keep in mind, too, is sometimes, um, it does take a little bit of money and you get money. So, if, if, if the high efficiency stuff are gonna cost a little more, they will work with us on what they will rebate back. So, we'll make sure it is cost-effective or not. State Trust Fund provides a low-interest loan. Patrick's familiar with this. The State Trust Fund's a real simple, uh, application, but it shows you to the, uh, the interest rates. So, the interest rates there are, depending on how many years you're gonna take out for this project, I'm, I'm thinking we're in the eleven, twenty-year range. So, their interest rates are up a little bit, but it, it is a relatively simple one and it's locked in. Uh, tax increment financing, the one thing that, uh, on this one is, uh, TIF laws prohibit TIF funds to finance a new City Hall or police station project. So, it's, uh, they don't, they don't assist you with it. Uh, geo-bonding, we already talked with Ellers last meeting, council meeting, they talked about, and they're still looking at the options, uh, how they can do it. Corporate civic contributions, if there are any major employers out there, uh, residents, uh, that would come forward. Uh, we have seen some of those where you've got, uh, they get the naming rights to the city council chambers, to the, you know, to the, uh, lobby of the city hall, that type of stuff, for a significant contribution. Those, that's a word-of-mouth thing. We have to talk with, uh, the locals to see if there's someone out there. Uh, maybe a larger business in the community would, would like to come forward with some money. Uh, local fundraising, we've always, in the local fundraising we've worked with, uh, you're looking at, they wanna do, you know, more attractive parks, those type of thing, trails, those type of stuff, uh, playground equipment. And those are typically a little less on the value of the funding that they provide. So, uh, the other considerations we looked at is, is potentially to investigate emergency operations center. We really don't, you know, we need to take a look at that, at least, uh, with Jerry and the, the local county. County officials may have it. Uh, you know, we're looking at, i- if you have a disaster, you know, where's the place to go? And, and, you know, we had one several years ago that, um, that, that hall wouldn't have worked because they evacuated the city. But, uh, there's an option out there, you know, potentially to, to look at some female funding or something, but that may be rare. We also talked about, you know, in, in, in discussing the project is, we, we've had several public meetings. Uh, you can get the word out, get the, get the public involved. Uh, we'll help, uh, garner this project through and, and allow the publics in, involved and know what's going on. It's not a lot of rumors out there so far. So, in, in summary, um, there aren't a lot of significant grant funding programs out there for this public facility, but there are some smaller ones that, that will be able to fund some of the projects. And those are where we need to get the applications ready, uh, get them submitted. The rural development application is relatively small. Um, it's something we've worked with Patrick on and, and the, when we are moving forward, we can sit down and talk with them. Focus on Energy is another one. Through the design phase, you start working with them on the fixtures and units inside the building. So, the next steps we're looking at was, uh, uh, continue working with Cedar Corp and Ellers on defining, developing a financing plan. Meet, continue to investigate these programs we're representing. As again, once we start moving forward, we can call rural development. Uh, Jennifer's out of Shawnee, just a short run down here to meet, sit down and meet with Patrick and go through what, what programs they have available. And then prepare any applications as, as needed for these, uh, different programs. So, that's where we are, um, knowing that there's no real significant things out there. Patrick, go get this to Ellers and, and see what the next, uh, step is for City Council committees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, I can jump in real quick, too. I don't know if you've got any questions or anything on it, but the, the goal would probably be, when we talked to Ellers, Ellers had said, here's your worst-case scenario, and worst-case scenario is how much you might have to borrow. But they had the caveat saying, well, you'll wanna know how much you can get in grant funding. I, I think the general idea is that you're probably on a tight window to be able to get all of the grant programs that may come up because they come up at different times during the year. But as Thad had run through and as Cedar Corp ran through, for the type of project we're doing, there's grant funding for, um, maybe some upgrades to equipment. You can get some equipment, but it's probably not going to be, and I'm repeating what he basically said. It's not going to be significant enough to alter how much you might have to borrow. And so, it's probably a good idea to refer this back or forward the info through to, um, to Ellers for review. So. Go ahead, I'm sorry, let me jump in on it.
Oh, it's okay. If you wanna repeat what he said, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yes, Frank?
Just a quick question. I didn't hear anything about that kitchen when you were talking about the brick and mortar and the police. Uh, we had at one time talked about a kitchen going in, a full-scale kitchen on that senior citizen. That would certainly fall under that same guideline and would add a little bit more to that.
The potential, you know, the, the, that would be, we have to talk to rural development, you know, where they think that might be. That's equipment.
Right.
For, depending on the programs that it's, it services also, you know, that's, if it's just gonna be there for people to rent out the building, it might be a little different. But if it's there for the seniors, not saying we're moving the seniors' meals or anything, but there's the option for seniors' use and, and community use, that's, that's okay. That's better.
Thank you.
Sure. So, I think we'd still like to have a motion, receipt of this or something, knowledge receipt of it, correct?
Yeah, you, you can, uh, basically receive and place on file is that you receive the information and you'll put it in the record with the project.
I'll make a motion that we receive this information.
I'll second that.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think I'd like to refer this to Finance to have them put it on their agenda and keep looking at it.
Okay, we'll connect with, uh, Ellers on that. We're working with them on the TIF already, so that's, that's already, the phone calls are already scheduled, so.
Thank you. I don't think we have a mayor's report tonight. Administrator's report?
Yeah, I've got a couple of items. We have been, as I've been telling you, probably at every committee, we've been working on the twenty fifteen budget. And the, according to the budget calendar, we're going through committee, um, in October. So, the budget itself is gonna come through October, and then again for final approval in November. So, that'll be at your next round of committee meetings. Um, we did send out the citizen survey for this year. We had sent it through the Finance Committee to gauge some interest on potential directed questions. And when I say that, last year, we had the question about the poultry ordinance, whether we should change that. Uh, Finance had forwarded that to the Public Works Committee. And at the Public Works Committee, they decided, because we have the garbage and recycling RFP open, and there are a number of options, oh, it's not open, it, we've received four proposals. They have not been provided to the committee yet, but there are a number of options on, um, how do you put your garbage out? Is it just in a bag? Is it in a container? How do you put your recycling out? Is it just in your own container? Is it in a provided container? There are a number of options there, um. On the citizen survey, the public works committee recommended asking two questions about recycling. One of them is basically to ask people, okay, right now, we collect recyclables one time a month. According to your own individual situation at your own home, what would be the best pickup schedule for you, knowing how much recycling you generated at your house? So it was, the question is, would you like it weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, or does it not really matter at all? And the reason that that's going to be valuable information is that the survey itself's gonna be open through the second week in October, and the public works committee is going to be meeting right about when that closes. We'll have the information, when you change your frequency of pickup, the costs change obviously, so it's, that'll be more information we'll have to be able to make a decision at that point. The other question that was put out there is, there's a, there's an option that you can leave our garbage and recycling the same as it is now, where you use your own containers, or you just throw bags at the curb? Or the city or the haulers could provide you with a container that's on wheels, and it would be about ninety-five gallons. The public works committee recommended putting a question on there that asked people, if we give you a bin and if it's specifically on wheels, do you feel you'd be more likely to recycle material? So that's, those are the two questions. The third question we put on the survey is related to that summer ticket discount program that we had. We sold, I don't remember off the top of my head the number, I think it was about twenty tickets we had sold this year. The people that bought tickets saved about a hundred and fifty dollars off of their admission fees. We make about seventy-five cents off of each ticket, and we made, I believe it came out to about fifteen bucks. But the, one of the questions we're putting on the survey though is listing out all of the attractions that are eligible through the program. House on the Rock, Milwaukee County Zoo, Museum, all the Dells Attractions, Great America. We're asking people, knowing that you have the ability to buy tickets through this program, which attractions would you be interested in? And that'll help us, because while we don't pay for the tickets upfront, you have to order fifty of them upfront. And then, you know, if we order fifty of an attraction that nobody would want to go to, it'd be nice to just know that upfront. But at the same time, if there's a good need for people that wanna go to an attraction, we'd like to know that too, to get those tickets. That's the citizen survey, it's, everything else is the same as last year. It's to start generating trends if we can, so that'll be in October, we'll get the results. The third item I have is the Lake Association, or the Wyoming Lake Restoration, talked about the idea of generating a lake district. And last month, they had talked to you about their intent to go get a petition. They did drop off a map for me today, and they did talk last month about one thousand feet, fifteen hundred, two thousand feet from the lake. You know, how big are they going to go with that, with their target audience and trying to get a district? What they settled on was not one of those options, but, and I've got maps for all of you, and one for, for the media too. But basically, if, if a piece of property literally fronts on the lake, it's included in their target group. So if you're ten, fifteen feet, a good example would be your home, because you don't back up to the lake. They don't have your home included in their target group, which is different, because they had talked a little bit about going for a thousand feet. But if you wanna pass these around. And I think I do have two, three, four, five for you on the council here. But it's, there's a list on the front, the smaller sheet of paper is all of the properties that are in the city. And if you flip that first sheet over, all of the properties that are in the town that would be eligible for this. This is not an action item for you, and it's not for any other purpose other than just to give you information on where they're probably headed with this. So again, that's information, I don't think they've actually started the petition process, but they do have a meeting later this week. So that is an update only, and then the, the other update I was gonna give was gonna be on horse and buggy days, but Mr. Wilson came and gave you a good update. I do really feel strongly that he did a very good job, and I, I feel good about saying, if, however, whatever you thought about the parade, you can put the credit for that on Jeff Lurkey, because he had done quite a bit to put that together, and, and Jared Wilson went over and above, and above, and above, and above. And, and what I kept telling him through the summer was, well, when five, ten years down the road, you look back, hopefully this is the worst one out of those five to ten, so hopefully that's, that's the case, so.
What about the website?
It'll be up this week.
Up this week?
It'll be up this week, yep.
Very good.
Great.
Yep, we were just on the phone with them, and I was on the phone with them this morning too, so.
Thank you.
It'll be up this week, yep.
Excellent. So I guess we'll turn it over to Dave then.
Do I need to bring the computer, or are you?
I, I got you. We might have to move the screen a little bit.
I'm glad you're here, 'cause otherwise we were gonna have to do a flash mob and we were, we were gonna do the YMCA. But you showed up, so we're not doing it.
Well, you can do the flash mob anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't really know how to make this. It's a little bit of slideshow.
This four. That'll work. Oh. Lots of votes here. Lots of votes here, should be good to go.
I think you have some new people who've been here, so, I know Scott and Nick, and Dave Teal.
Nice to meet you, one, three.
Okay, and your Mike, right?
Mike was here.
You're Bruce.
Yeah, Mike is, we haven't met.
Mike's the mayor.
I think that Bruce was here.
Okay.
And this is.
Shani Appleby, Ward Two.
Dave Teal.
Dave? You knew that, you were on there.
I'm sorry.
Shani Appleby, Ward Two.
Okay, okay, Dave Teal.
Come on here. Mayor didn't make it to that.
No, he called in sick today. Here, there you go. Hey, technology.
All right, okay. This project started, well, really it probably started about seven, eight years ago. But this particular grant that is titled the Joint Effort Marketing Grant from the Wisconsin Department of Tourism, we've had that for three years, this was the last year. So you could, you could get that grant if you kind of put really a coalition together in order to do a marketing project from your area. So really, because we, we did this as a county together, we were able to secure that grant for the, for the last three years. And those are the groups, the Sais and Villages, UW Extension, the Economic Development Corporation, the Wapaka County Visitors and Promotion Council is really kind of a consortium of, I think, three or four chambers in the county. And they use some of the money that they would have normally put into some maps that they produced and put into this project for a couple of years, and then of course, the Wisconsin Department of Tourism. And why are we doing this? Well, really, you've probably heard me say this before, but Wapaka County, like Wisconsin and a lot of the Midwest really is, is based around those, those three sectors that really drive our economy. So manufacturing, there's a ton of programs really at the state and federal level to try to help that sector. Ag has been around forever, so there are programs obviously out there for that. Tourism, really, there's not a lot of programs around to, to really help drive that tourism industry. This was one, and this is relatively new, so it was nice to find something that really can, I think, make a difference. The hometown program, when I said this thing goes back about eight years, and, you know, Nick probably remembers 'cause he was involved in some of that. It was an earlier grant program from actually a different department at the state. But again, what we used it for really was to try to build some groups inside each of these communities to, to start trying to take a little bit of responsibility for how the town, you know, bringing the town, bringing the downtowns back a little bit. And again, this is a, this is a longstanding problem. It's probably been, I'll say late seventies, really early eighties, you know, since our downtowns have really been the hub of the areas that surround them. So like, you know, there's fifteen thousand people around New London, and at one time, they all came downtown to shop. Well, that ended, and we're not going back there. This isn't, you know, we're not the only ones with this problem, so it's all over the, all over the country. What do you do about small towns? And again, your downtown area is really a key area, because it is what people see and it's their first impression of your community. And, and so we definitely want our downtowns to be successful. And so this was a program really aimed at that, that Joint Effort Marketing Grant. And why? Well, this is just something to show you that just about ninety-seven cents of every dollar that's spent by a visitor is spent in local businesses, in the small businesses that are in your community and other communities. So logical thing is, let's try to get some more people here to increase business. The most recent statistics that, that we have from the Department of Tourism was in two thousand twelve and, and two thousand thirteen, that's the first number, eighty-one seventy-five. So we actually rank one notch lower of the seventy-two counties than we did in two thousand twelve, but the spending did go up, employment went up slightly, labor income slightly up, and the local tax revenue was slightly increased. So, you know, we're not bad, we're in the middle of the pack among the seventy-two counties. So what did we do? Okay, so the first two years really, the first year was strictly spent on developing a marketing plan for the entire county. And, and so we went through an RFP, and there are two people from each of the communities that were a part of the committee that worked with the corporation and UW Extension to guide this project. It's Patrick, and it is Nick's wife, are the two people from Wyoming. And, and so the first year really was really about research, brand development, finding out who we are. We, we did do a lot of website development that year, and we did run some online ads and some YouTube videos. So we, we were able to use this money to actually create some really good videos really from small businesses from each of the communities. And so we did that the first year, well, and into the second year. So we ended up creating, I think, about sixteen videos free for the businesses for that, for that first year. And, and the second year, I should say. And then the third year, and the, the revenue came from the municipalities, you were a part of that, and the Wisconsin Department of Tourism. So those are the, the budget numbers for the first two years. And then the in-kind money coming from my hours and UW Extension. Now this year, so we did launch it in year two, we ran for about a month, and, and we had to do this in a season that wasn't our most profitable. So the summer is when we're most profitable in tourism in Wapaka County. We were running our stuff in, well, we waited in two thousand thirteen, because the weather did not break really till the end of May, and that was the same for this year. We waited till the end of May to start running our advertising campaign, because we wanted the weather to, to be nice when we started reaching out to people. So we did that for a month for the, the year two, and now this year, we ran for all three months. And actually, we are running all the way through the end of the year, and that's because of the ability from the marketing firm. And the marketing firm that won the RFP, that was awarded the RFP is actually from Wapaka County. They're out of Clintonville, Wisconsin, really the only marketing firm that we have in the county. And they've been a great partner, and it's great to have somebody in the county as, as your partner, because they obviously care about their, their local community in the county that they live in. So we've gotten, I think, a really, really great deal, and they continue to, to be our partner. Thing I wanna point out this year is that on the revenue side, and again, we've learned a lot of things, the website with the online ads, YouTube videos, the mobile apps, the Facebook ads, all that stuff. We've, we've learned a lot of what works and really what doesn't. And I think we're much better prepared to go into year four, which is what I'm here to talk about this tonight. But the Wisconsin Department of Tourism, this was year three. So every year, they reduce the amount of money in this project. The first year, it was seventy-five percent of the money that went into the research and development of the marketing plan. Second year, it was fifty percent of the ad price, the ad costs that we bought, the advertising campaign. And this year, twenty-five percent of the ad campaign. So we needed to, we need to replace them obviously. So this year, I started going around to local businesses in all the communities that are a partner here and started getting them to join at either a two hundred forty dollar a year level or a six hundred dollar a year level. And the difference mainly being professionally done video for, for your business. And so I think it's pretty telling that we ended up with forty businesses joining and almost twenty thousand dollars. So really, the single largest, you know, revenue generator this year is coming from the local businesses. And to me, that, that's huge. That means that they understand what we're trying to do, and they agree with what we're trying to do. And really, what we've put together is a marketing cooperative. And these small businesses really do not have a lot of professional marketing expertise. And so now, they have really a marketing firm, kind of that they are connected to, that they can tap into if they need be, or at least get to understand what, what this is all about and what this takes to kind of get out there with the current social media and, you know, electronic world that we're living in. So we have the, we have the, the visitwapakacounty.com website, and then we also have a Facebook page where we have over two thousand followers now, and we have a YouTube channel. So all the YouTube videos that we put together this year are, are part of that. And now we're out, and it's, it's, it's pretty interesting stuff, how you can actually get out there and tap into, you know, you can really find people that you actually can target because of the way the, the web is set up today. And, and that's really a huge thing for, I think, small businesses, 'cause you're not just throwing an ad out there into the blue, you're literally targeting customers that are probably interested in, in what you have to offer. So this is just from, some of the stuff from the second quarter. So for the website, we had, you know, just over forty-six hundred unique visitors in the second quarter coming from all over Wisconsin, and then, you know, a lot from Madison, pretty heavy around the Fox Valley area. So we're targeting ads on cable networks, mostly in the Fox Valley and in the Milwaukee area. You know, some went a little bit into, the area went a little bit into northern Wisconsin, but mostly the Fox Valley and Milwaukee areas. But we're still getting a lot of hits from Madison and Chicago, which tells me that, you know, we're starting to generate interest in, in rebuilding, 'cause this is now the second year that we're running advertising. Oh, sorry. So again, and this, these are figures from the end of June. So with our Facebook, at that point, we're up to eighteen fifty-five, and we're averaging twenty-five likes daily. And, but you're still, because of all the connections, you know, from, of, of people with their connections, we're still reaching, ending up reaching about forty thousand people a week with our, really what we're doing. really what we're doing is running advertising on our Facebook, uh, pages and doing what's called, you know, the Facebook boosting, you know, where you can get, um, more recognition for your Facebook posts. This is just a breakdown of, of who we're reaching. So again, we're reaching the, uh, seventy-one percent female to, to male on Facebook. That's not a big surprise. And, and then kind of in that target audience, which we like, which is the, uh, twenty-five to fifty-four area where, you know, a lot of the spending decisions are made by females in those families. And, uh, so we thought that was good, that, that was the demographic we were reaching. Um, people are watching video. That really is what we've learned in these two years is that video is, is pretty much king. That's where people want to get their information from. So our videos are, are typically about ninety seconds to two minutes long for each of these businesses. And, uh, and that was just for the three months that, uh, we ran our advertising this year. And we had ninety-five hundred views of our, of our visit, our videos on the YouTube channel and probably through the visitwapakacounty.com website because all the videos are on there too. This is just showing you that, how reasonable it is for some of the stuff that we're doing. So, um, we're running, uh, ads via YouTube and you can get two hundred thousand impressions over a six-week period for thirty-two hundred dollars. And again, they're targeting, and I'm not going to explain this as well as the marketing firm can, but they're actually targeting people that are interested in the areas that you have identified. So we're talking about, we want people that are interested in the outdoors or we'll name off categories that we think fit our, our lifestyle and the things that we have to offer. And they can literally target people that are interested in those things. If they do a number of searches, our ad is going to be popping up to them. And our ads are there to really drive traffic to the website where all our cooperative partners are listed, their YouTube, their videos are there, their, uh, listings for their, their businesses are there, which have, you know, connections to their website and connections to their Facebook pages, stuff like that. This is just a kind of a cost, you know, kind of simple cost comparison when you look at some of the media versus what, what we're doing. Uh, so one insertion ver, versus all of those multiple impressions that we're, we're able to generate. So it really becomes a way for small businesses to actually start advertising, um, and getting repeat advertisements in front of people that are probably interested in their business and, and do it in a very cost-effective way. Where before that, that kind of targeted advertising was really going to be only available to the larger companies which have big advertising budgets. So again, I really think that this is, to me, the first thing in all the years that I've been doing this that really is a tool that the small businesses can use. And, and I think the price is very competitive. And, uh, because it's, you know, being helped by the communities and the county. So next year, um, we did a little survey from, uh, the other counties around here to, uh, try to see what, what people were doing. And again, the average annual budget you can see there that they were spending just at the county level on tourism and then the median, uh, budget. So with that in mind, we asked the counties to kind of step in and fill the void that the, uh, Department of Tourism grant is, you know, no longer with us. So that, we asked them to kind of bump up theirs to twenty-four thousand to make up for that out of the budget. And again, that, I believe that's going to go through. It's, uh, it's in their budget this year. So, uh, if nothing, uh, goes awry, I believe that they will be in there. Every other community so far has said that they're going to continue on. I do have to go to, uh, Wapaka yet. But, um, actually the only two presentations would be to you and Wapaka. Every other community has said we're fine with where we're at and we're looking, you know, to forward to continuing in two thousand fifteen. So that would be the goal for next year. Uh, I'm looking to double the amount of contributions coming from the businesses. So, you know, I want to get, I want to get eighty to a hundred businesses, local businesses involved in this project. And then continue at the same rate for the municipalities. I believe that was nine hundred sixty dollars for City of Wyegah. And, uh, and then bump Wapaka County, uh, up to twenty-four thousand. The expansion of goals and objectives. It's my belief that the tools that we've created here, uh, apply not just to, uh, small businesses, but actually to, uh, workforce development and to the demographics of, of this area. And, um, so I, to me, this is, this is bigger than, than the project we've been doing so far. And I think from, you know, from a city perspective, from a county perspective, we need to look at this as more than just helping our small businesses. Though that in and of itself is a great thing and, and I think it's well worth it for that. But in addition to this, um, we're, you know, we're losing workforce and, and the demographics are against us, uh, over the next thirty years. So bottom line is we need people and we need to let people know who we are and what we're all about, um, in order to even be considered for people to move here or to come here and work here. And this, again, is the perfect venue because that is how people are going to be, continue to get their information. You know, if we think it's, everybody's on the web and their smartphones now, I, I don't think it's going to get less, uh, it's only going to get more. So we need to be there and we do have a, an iPhone app already and we will, will be getting the Android app. We're working on that right now too. So we have the tools, I think, to be in front of everybody. It's, uh, it's, I think, very, very important that we continue to go down this road. I, I will be, uh, meeting this Friday actually with the marketing firm and two of the larger companies in Wapaka County to talk about using these tools for workforce development. Because again, we are, twenty-five percent of our economy is manufacturing. And we can't let that, you know, get away without, uh, without a fight. So, uh, they need skilled workers, they need good workers. And, uh, as you can see, um, age twenty to sixty-four, we've got a nineteen percent decline just in people over the next thirty years. So we need to let people know who we are and try to attract people to come here, work here, live here. So to me, that is, uh, a, a bigger, bigger thing that we need to be cognizant of. And this project has kind of fed into it. Uh, I can't say that I planned it. I just, it just work, it's working out that way. And, uh, I think it's really, really important to continue on. So with that, I will take questions or?
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
And in full disclosure, I asked Patrick, share your presentation with me.
Okay.
And because I had some questions and as you said, Chris sits on the board with Patrick. I asked her as a council person and she, well, give you the short answer. She said, ask Dave, but not so many words or not so few words. All right. But my question to her was how do I, how do I have proof of return on investment in all this? Because clicks on a website or clicks on YouTube don't necessarily mean anybody coming through a door.
It, it doesn't. And, um, of course, uh, one thing I'll say is, you know, an ad in a newspaper or an ad on a radio is the same thing. Uh, the thing that you can do with this, I think that is a little bit better is we do have the Google Analytics. So we can get down to the level to show how many people were literally watching your video.
Right.
Or were looking at your information on the webpage and, and how long were they there? All that kind of information that you can get. Uh, and then the other thing that we're doing is, um, we're offering all the businesses the ability to put some sort of coupon discount package thing together, which is done by the marketing firm, advertised by Wapaka County, that's part of it. And, you know, people can bring those in to walk through your door that way. So, uh, and they can, you know, they can download them onto a smartphone. They can print them out if they want to. So that's really kind of the close the loop of, of trying to get people from looking to walking through the door.
But that's from a retail perspective?
That's strictly from, yes, the, the retail perspective from, yeah.
See, from my perspective, we're looking for skilled labor.
Right.
You know, and I, I do, I commend the Wyegah Fremont School System for starting to look at their curriculum and gear it around the trades industry. Going forward, I think that's great. But, uh, yeah, in, in my business, the, we need, we need people that have skilled labor to come and work for us. Nick, he needs people to come in and spend money in, in the stores.
I need skilled labor too.
And I think both, I think they both complement one another.
Without a doubt. And, um, as you know, I've been working with the schools on this for some time. And I believe it's to the point where I don't really need to be there anymore. I think the schools understand, uh, they need to be connected to the local economies and they're working on that. So I'm taking a different tack now and I'm going to start going down this route, um, using the, the tools that are out there to basically try to steal some people because that's what it's all, going to be all about. There just aren't enough people. So in order to steal people, we got to let them know who we are, what we're about, what it's like to live here, what it's like to be a part of living here. And we can do that. We can do that now, uh, pretty easily and at people's convenience. So that's kind of the route that I'm going down with the next iteration of this, which is really the workforce development side. Uh, we're going to continue to work obviously on, on the, uh, visitor tourism side. But again, I, I really believe that, um, the tools to market to your customers and communicate with them, like you could literally focus your coupon or your advertising of even your video. We can take that and run it in any area you want us to. So next year, we're actually going to offer businesses for their six hundred dollars. Do they want us to direct their advertising at a specific market? We will do some of that. Some of the money is going to go into the pool and, and pay for the group stuff. But, you know, the communities, uh, money is obviously going to be used for more of the pool group stuff that we're doing. But we are going to give the bit, local businesses the option to actually direct some of their advertising at specific markets if they want to. And, and help them understand what might be the best markets for them. So again, that kind of marketing expertise is not going to be a, you know, it's just not available at, at this kind of a price for everybody out there. And I think it's because we're doing this as a cooperative, I think that it's a great, great way for local businesses to go. And I think it's only, we're only going to build on it and get better at it, so.
I'm jumping, I got a question, but I'll jump in real quick just so you all know. And it's, I'm sure you know this, it's just a reminder that this presentation is ahead of your budget discussions. That'll be next month and then in November too. So this is not for an action tonight, but the, essentially the request is the city's share has been about nine hundred sixty dollars and that's a request for next year too. So to keep that in mind when you're looking at the budget for next year. Um, so there is no, you know, when we're done here to, to have a motion or anything like that. It's, it's informational. The question I have for you though is as you start moving into the next phase, which is the workforce development, do you see this transforming into that? Or would this be continuing on its own with a workforce development piece? Or is it too early to be?
It's connect.
I don't mean to nail you down on it, but yeah.
No, that, no, we've talked about it already.
Yeah.
They will, they will be connected, but they, there will be a separation too. So there will be that workforce piece, if you will, of the website that people can get specific information related to communities and related to living here. But there's a connection. I, I have some of that information already sitting out on the, the visit Wapaka County website. So we will connect those two together, you know, so that they really, you don't need to duplicate all the informations.
Yeah, and I could speak just from sitting on the, the panel. There has been discussion, when you look at this, you know, we're talking a little bit about, not so much retail, but when you talk about retail, that's a certain type of business in Wyegah. We had talked at one point, if you're looking for a thousand dollars or, you know, nine hundred sixty from the city, six hundred from a business, we weren't really focusing on the agri-piers or the piers because they could probably provide you quite a bit of money. But the discussion was more, they're coming, you know, this here is to drive people into town to go to your business.
Right.
The agri-peer piers, their interest and, you know, world class too is getting people to stay.
Right. So. The, uh, what we're, what we've been doing and what we're continuing to do, again, we stretched out our fifty thousand dollar budget to the end of the year just because of the tools that, one, the marketing firms figured out. We were going through Gannett to start with, but they quickly figured out what Gannett was doing and brought it in-house and, which is just cool because we have that expertise in-house now. But just being able to run those ads, those pre-roll ads on, on YouTube, it's just unbelievable, the amount of people that actually click through either to the website, watch the whole video or, and then again, you're getting the impressions for whatever amount of seconds that they're, they're forced to watch it. But I'm going to be trying to convince all the businesses next year to go the video route because it really is, it, it clearly, it's where people are looking for their information. And then of course, the social media stuff ties into that. But that's more connecting with your existing customer base than it is getting new looks at who you are. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, no police report, take it?
Uh, I will give you just a quick update on why he is not here tonight. Because we got backed up a week with Labor Day. We ran into the same meeting night as the school board. And the police chief is at a school board meeting because they are discussing the no backpacks policy at the high school. There's a request by the student council to change that policy. And he is there to give, um, some backup information on why it's in effect. And if I can tell you, um, his, um, the SART, SART Brandon basically is at fire training tonight that he couldn't reschedule. He sends his apologies for not making it to the council.
All right, we'll set the meetings for next month.
All right, right now we've got finance scheduled for October sixth at six o'clock. Public works is scheduled for October thirteenth at six o'clock.
Yes.
And council is at October twentieth at six thirty.
Oh, six thirty.
Throw, throw that in there. Um, do we need to schedule a police committee meeting? Or do we want to wait, see what's up with the chief or?
Well, don't we?
Well, you're going to have to for the budget.
Budgets, okay.
Wednesday, um, the fifteenth, six P M.
October fifteenth at six P M?
Yes.
Um, rec, did you want one to do the final review?
For the budget and for the swim lake report.
When would rec like theirs? Has been, I think, on a Tuesday.
That's Bruce, right?
You guys got any idea?
I don't have a calendar. I'll just whatever Bruce decides.
I've got a calendar. So right now we've got the sixth is finance, thirteenth is public works. You said the fifteenth was police?
Yep.
That's October. We need to look at the dates.
About the seventh, October seventh, a Tuesday. Does that work for you?
Fine, whatever.
Does that work for you?
Works for me.
Okay. Tuesday, October seventh, at six o'clock. Um, ordinance, do you know, yes, we will be meeting?
Yes.
Okay. When do you want to do that?
Well, I'm going to be on the seventh or the...
So the, the week of the thirteenth.
Could you, could we do, um, ordinance and police on the same night? Or do you think that'll get too long?
It should be fun.
Yeah, it should be fun.
Should, is that two birds on stone? Cause-
Maybe to ordinance first?
Yeah, we, we could do ordinance first.
Ordinance first at six and then police would be following.
Let's do it like that. Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks.
Um, public property, I don't, no, I don't think we need one, do we?
No, because we are... Well, potentially, I would say no right now.
No, it's-
The city hall project is going to finance, so.
Okay. And then plan commission, do you think there's?
Hey, does he have that?
Depending on whatever.
There is going to be an early October. There's probably three things that already are on tap for plan commission, but we don't have it set.
Okay. So that will be-
The mayor, the chair, we'll, we'll check on that because we've got to check with citizen members on their schedules too.
Okay.
But we will have one though.
Then that should be it.
That's it? Alright.
We need a motion to-
Go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session. Uh, do we need to read all that?
Yes, I'd like you to read all that.
Okay, I will make a motion to go into closed session. No, I don't have-
No, you don't need to.
Okay.
Oh, yes you do.
Her agenda. I would say pursuant to section-
Nineteen point.
nineteen twenty-five.
One C.
And then just the reason.
Consideration of employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any city employee who is subject to the jurisdiction or authority of the council.
The reason, the next sentence.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, there you go. The reason for the closed session is to review wages slash performance for the 2015 budget. Council may choose to reconvene an open session in order to take action on items from the closed session.
I can tell you that we will not come into open session afterwards.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Edwards?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Carried with all eyes.
Time's eight oh five.
Eight oh.